Row Kyle.
Mayor Tony Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Conster.
Here.
Alderman Johnny Dunn.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gray.
Here.
Alderman Kathy Holt.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan. City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Tension.
Here.
Thank you. Item 3 is the approval of the minutes from the meeting on June the 10th, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or any corrections? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item 4 is Employee of the Month.
Well Mayor, you know that about a year ago, we suspended, for years we had done an Employee of the Month, and a year ago we suspended that, and we were trying to get a handle on our finances and see where we were, and that was one of the things that got cut among many things that we were doing. And it was our goal to try to get that back up and running this year in the new year. Of course, we started the new fiscal year July 1, so that, we've got that back in play. And actually, it's going to be my pleasure to award this to someone out of my department. Steven Switzer. Don't faint, now don't faint.
It'll be okay.
For many years, actually, what the best I can tell, going back 20 years, the city's budget has not been on time. A year ago, when I came in, there was a lot of work to be done, but one of the pledges that I made was that it was my goal, as was y'all's goal, and y'all's directive to me, to try the best we could to get a budget in on time. Well, this year, the budget came in on time. It has went to Nashville, it has been approved, it has been returned, and she's going to talk about all that here in a minute, because after I have the communication from the city administrator, I'm gonna, we're gonna have some communication from the finance director, because she's got several things she wants to talk about. But Tina came in, in the fall, she's done a great job, she's been a big asset to the city, took a lot off of my back that I was having to do, she's a professional, she's highly motivated, she does you a good job, she does me a good job, she makes us all look good. Without her, the budget would not have been on time. She stayed on task with all the other things she had to do, she got the budget in on time along with everything else she's had to do, and it's my pleasure to name her in our new Employee of the Month program, to let her be the first that's come back yet, because I don't know anybody deserves it more. And I did everything I could do to keep her from finding out about it.
He did, I gotta admit to that. But thank you all.
Congratulations. James, you can continue talking, you're next.
Okay, thank you. One thing to report on, we had our annual 4th of July employee picnic last week, some of y'all were there, appreciate you coming, I know everybody couldn't make it. The attendance was up this year, we had about 35 people last year, employees come, this year it's 60. We had to go back and get more food. We had way too much food last year, so we ended up not having enough, and I'd rather not have enough than have some left over. I thought everybody had a good time, appreciate those of you that came, and those of you that couldn't, had good reasons, and I appreciate it. Okay, one, one thing I've got on here, there's a couple of things on here that I'm gonna bring up, that had we been able to get everything in play, if we knew about it in time, we would've got it on the agenda. But this is one of those things, and this is the charter contract. As part of the Johnson Controls Program, one of the things we are getting is a new phone system, and it's an integrated system that's going to tie all the city departments together, it's gonna have a lot of features we don't have now. But it's an internet-based system, and Rocky and Tina have been involved with them, Rocky did the negotiations, there's a big thick packet in the contract, and that needs to be approved, if you all choose to vote on that tonight, or if you need to put, if you want to put it off for next time. Rocky, does that, does that, what's the timeline on that?
Once they sign the contract, I don't think they'll actually get it up and running for at least...
I mean, do they have to vote on that tonight, or can that be done in August?
I mean, as soon as it gets voted on, they could probably move forward, I mean, just as quick as possible, it's ever how quickly you want the policy.
That's up to y'all, yeah. But it's a thick, it's a contract that thick.
Does it cost any extra?
It's gonna save us money, it's gonna save us about...
It's part of the Johnson Controls thing, it's just part of it.
Right, but through this Johnson Control, are we gonna have...
Well, we're arguing with them about that, they're wanting this one company to do it, that's wanting $11,500 to do it. And of course, we've talked to them and talked to them, and they've buckled on a lot of stuff, where they've tried to make us pay for stuff, and we, Tina and I, have argued with them, and Tim's been instrumental in that too. And so far, we've paid for nothing. But now, we're back, we're back at the arguing point now on this deal, because they've told us from the jump that there's no more monies involved. And so now, they've come up with this group, this phone, these are the people that the phone is coming from, I forget, what's their name, Rocky?
Saratoga.
Saratoga. And now, they're saying that, well, we don't have the infrastructure to have an internet-based phone, and we gotta put this infrastructure in. Well, Rocky and I, you know, it's like Rocky said, when they came in here and looked, they knew we didn't have that infrastructure. So why do you say, yeah, this is, you know, we're gonna do all this stuff, and you don't owe any more money, and then now they come up and say, well, you don't have the infrastructure, you're gonna have to do that?
So what's Johnson Controls saying about the extra month?
Well, he didn't show up, he didn't show up at the meeting we had scheduled.
So...
So we're still in limbo on that.
So it wouldn't bother you if we waited until we got an answer from them to...
Well, that's what Rocky's been telling them, until we come to a conclusion on this infrastructure, we're not moving forward on nothing.
I think that would be the best idea.
Now, Rocky says that he can buy the stuff for about $30 something hundred, and he thinks he can do it all himself, if push comes to shove, and we can't, you know, arm twist them into paying for it. But I'm not paying Saratoga no $11,500, you can get that. But I don't think we should have to pay anything. And even if it comes down to Rocky doing it, I'm gonna try to squeeze the stuff out of him. Not out of Rocky. Out of Frank, I can't think of his last name now, but Frank, the Johnson Control guy, that's the project director, Frank, something.
So we can just put this off until next month?
That's fine with me. But Rocky, Rocky did a good job, he met with them, spent a whole day, more or less, with Charter going around looking at what had to be done, and Rocky did a good job with that, but now it's another one of them three-inch-thick contracts.
Yeah, if we need to have a call-baiting on something like this that needs to move forward, I would suggest to us to do that, rather than vote on it blindly tonight.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah. Well, that, it's two different things, you know, it's Charter is the internet provider, it's two, it's, they're not Saratoga. Saratoga's the one that's trying to make us pay 11 grand and hold us hostage. Chief Regan has asked that you all, in the next couple of months, he would like to have a workshop with y'all to discuss the first responder program, and so he said there's no rush, but in the next couple of months, he'd like to try, for you all, to schedule a workshop for him, and of course, he's here, he can explain it or answer any questions you might have about that.
Well, you got mine, chief.
Well, I wanna, I would prefer to have a workshop, and just, instead of just saying, here, can we do this, I want y'all to be clear on how the first responder, how it works, how it's, how it's paid for, and especially how it's paid for, I want you to know that, you know, we've done our homework, we've done a lot of the preliminaries already, we already have our licenses, we have the state license as first responders, all the guys, but we won't go forward with doing this, because it's a, it's a joint effort with First Call Ambulance Service, we can't do it on our own, we have to do it with an ambulance service. So I'd like to have a workshop, so council can be clear with, with the fire department and with First Call, they'll be there too, to answer any questions at all that you have.
We'll have to buy a new truck, smaller?
No, right now, no, everything's, well, to answer your question, right now, the foreseeable expense is, there will be more fuel in the trucks, and there will be some more maintenance on the trucks we already have. But as far as supplies and all that kind of stuff, First Call does the supplies, First Call also does the restocking of the supplies. First Call's gonna do our continuous training that we have to have, so the biggest expense is gonna be the fuel and maintenance on our trucks that we already have.
Tuesday, August the 5th, okay?
It's fine with me.
5 o'clock? That work? We'll sit in for that. Tuesday, August the 5th, 5 o'clock.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, chief. The next thing that I have, and again, this is something that God, that really should've been on the agenda, but we didn't, didn't know it was gonna be ready to go this quick and urgent, wanted to kind of address it now, instead of waiting so it could go into, technically go into play on July 1. We have negotiated a new contract with 911. It has to be ratified by you all, and also by their board. Now, their board doesn't meet again till, like, the end of August or 1st of September, so if, it's up to y'all, if you want to address that tonight, or if you want to just put that on next month's agenda, because they're not gonna ratify their side for another month either way. But Terry, he kind of tried to get it done, because he wanted to try to get it into place back to July 1, so that we don't get overcharged for any more stuff moving forward. And so, but we do have a new contract drawn up, we negotiated with Nancy up there, we came to something that everybody's comfortable with, where everybody gave something, everybody got something, but we're still saving money. And that was, the bottom line that I put to them was that if it's not saving me money, there's no point in me doing it. And so, what they were wanting to begin with didn't save us money, it was actually gonna cost us more to contract it than it was going to do to hire people to do it, to go back to hiring our own people, as opposed to contracting with them for the service. But during the negotiation, they, they gave in on some things to get back to where we were saving money. So basically, what it was, was the insurance, they agreed to pay the insurance, and we don't have to reimburse them for that, but we reimburse them for everything else. And of course, we put in there, no more overtime, we're not gonna reimburse for that, you know, really nothing, except the 40 hours a week that they're supposed to be working.
And that's all of the 20, right?
Yes. And so, another thing we got in there was about raises, they were giving raises up there, and then we were having to pay them, and what we agreed to was that if city employees get a raise across the board, then it's up to them if they want to do the same thing for up there, for those two people. But if they choose to give a raise up there, and city employees don't get a raise across the board, then they have to pay it, we're not gonna reimburse it. Because I think that's only fair, you know, I think that's about all the things that, I mean, the pertinent stuff that's in there, is that we pay only the minimum, the salaries, no overtime, we pay the benefits, we've taken our fringe, like your, the income tax, the retirement, and the social security, we took that on, and they kept the insurance. They wanted us to take the insurance too, and that was the cutting point, if we paid the insurance too, their insurance is higher than ours. And if we paid the insurance too, then that put us to going in the hole. And so I told her that was unacceptable, we can't go in the hole, if I'm not saving money, I'm not, there's no point in doing it, there's no incentive for us to do it.
So this contract goes wrong with what you've got budgeted for this year?
This, well, will this fit exactly to what we budgeted? Yeah. I mean, I thought that was right, because that's how we based it on what we, how we negotiated, that's what we budgeted for, based on that. But under the old... We've got it right here. Yeah. But, I mean, but we just...
Because we just got it finished.
We, he just got, Terry just, of course, Terry's been gone on vacation, and...
So then they just done the night.
He just got it, we just got it yesterday.
Well, it can't be, I mean, we can vote on it tonight, but y'all haven't seen it, so if you want to take a good look at it, we can vote on it in August.
Yeah, because they can't vote, they're not gonna vote on it up there till August or September anyway. When's the next meeting, Maurice? Is it August or September? But anyway, Terry got that to us yesterday, and we, you know, was, I was gonna say, I was gonna lay it be up to y'all, what you want to do, if you want to address it tonight, if you want to wait, it don't matter to me.
I will wait.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I like to see it.
Well, if we have to do this charter thing this month, then maybe we can get a copy of that before then, and we can overlook it and maybe put it on there also.
Okay, well, I mean, that's up to y'all, however y'all want to do. Well, that's about, that's all I've got, but now, the finance director has several things she needs to talk about, so I'm gonna turn that over to her.
Well, the first item that we have is a request from Newport Grammar School for ordinance 2014-06 budget amendment. We, they've already gotten their board to approve it, we, this can be voted on tonight, and I will pending, you know, I'll need their full budget amendment to put in with ours, I can't send just theirs to the state. City amendment and school amendment have to be together when they go, and we're not ready for ours. And that's another item, I wanted to let you know, the timeline that we're looking for, for the budget amendment for this fiscal year 14. So...
School amendment started, now they're gonna amend it?
Place on last year's budget.
On 14.
And what they do is... I'm not wanting to sit here and start bending it, but this is a fact, they hold everything the last minute, and then they send it to us and say, we've gotta have this today, we've gotta have this tomorrow, we've got a deadline, and then we have to jump and jump to try to hit their deadline, and then from Tina tells us, this is what I need, you can't get back from, just like this right here, she may not tell you, but I'll tell you, this is not everything she needs, but they're saying, oh, this has gotta be, y'all have got to vote on this tonight, because we've got them tonight. Well, I mean, again, that's up to y'all.
That's no problem, we need to see the documentation, and they need to be on time, they want it done on time.
They sent the number, they sent the number, but it's not, it's not quite our opinion there.
Let Tina get what she needs before we can vote on anything, because we need to know exactly what we're doing.
And it's more to do with, just so you know, the format required from the call controller, you know, they need it in their format with the information they want, and like I said, I can't send it to them until we have ours ready.
And that would be nice to contain the tell them that way, too.
Okay.
Like, the call controller requires this, and I have to have it?
Yeah, and I do. I did want to mention the animal shelter, you know, there were many discussions in the spring of this year with the animal shelter, Randy and Lisa, and James and myself, and a lot of it concerned the rolling rescue, and making sure that that program was profitable, that it didn't generate a burden, you know, for the citizens, because it's animal control. And with the results that came out of those meetings, I just want to make mention that they turned it around. There was a significant decrease in the income that they were gonna see, and they adjusted their expenditures accordingly with this program that we came up with, and turned it around. So they've got, right now, which is preliminary financial results, a 6,500 to the good, which is where they need to be, you know, you don't want to make a profit, you don't want to see a loss. So they came right on top of where they should be, and I just wanted to make sure and mention that, because that took a lot of work in a short amount of time to make that happen. And as James said, we did get the call controller approval letter on both the budget and the tax anticipation note, so those were both good and ready to go. On the preliminary audit, we did have the auditors in last week, they were here for four days, and just talking with them, they were very pleased with everything they found, there was no big issues, they don't anticipate anything huge coming up, they will be back in October, and they're anticipating a week and about two or three days. The week will be for the full audit of the city itself, the two or three days is for the single audit, and single audit relates to, because we get federal grant money and federal programs, that's why we have to have the single audit. So effectively, we've pretty much reduced already, I think, if it wasn't for the single audit, we would've brought our audit down another, by another week this year. So I'm really glad that we're able to do that, that makes life easier for them, and I'm also anticipating we'll have less exception items in our audit this year. But we'll, again, have to wait until they get through. Preliminary financial statements were handed out to the department directors, these are preliminary, and I want to have next week to look through all the invoices that are coming in, to make sure there's nothing that still needs to be put back into June that belongs to the last fiscal year, you know, it's just a timing of something that was ordered on the last few days, and we don't get the invoice. So that's why you don't have those reports now, I want to make sure I get that filed in, and then for the month of August, we'll have your financial reports, and should be in August, my timeline plan is, assuming nothing happens, is to have the first reading of the budget amendment in August. And if that passes, then I can put those amendments preliminary into our computer system, close the year, and then have July reports out the department has, because I know that's another issue that James wanted to work on, so in our system, we can't generate new reports until the old year closes. So that means you're flying blind as a department head until that year closes. So if you wait until October, November, you've got half a year down, and you don't know where you're at. So that's why we're pushing to get that, if we get that first reading, and it's okay in August, I can close, we can get July reports out, final June, second reading in September, that would be the budget amendment that I would be sending to the state, and then, now the auditors won't be until October, so if they do find something significant, I can't guarantee that there might not be another budget amendment, hopefully not, been talking with them a lot last week to try to get anything major, if it's not major, they might pass it with, you know, without a budget, another budget amendment, so. But I prefer to do that and face the possibility of a small second amendment than have the department heads wait any longer. So that's a big issue. Oh, and the last item that I had was property tax. By state law, you cannot have property taxes that are deemed uncollectible sitting on your balance sheet if they are over 10 years old. And from last year's audit, I've identified, or they identified actually, because it was on last year's audit, there's about $35,000 that needs to be removed. This is mostly a balance sheet adjustment, there should be sufficient allowance for uncollectibles so that it doesn't hit our current year revenue, but I would, you know, and by law, I have to, but I just want to make sure you're okay with us moving ahead and removing that from our books, and removing that from our system, so that those are gone, because we, we can't have it.
We can't collect it.
Yeah.
And it's just all in those books.
Yeah. So here, no issues with that, I'll, okay. And if that's, does anybody have any questions?
Do you need this tax anticipation note to be on tonight? Just how long it can do it?
Yeah.
Will you need a motion tonight for what you're saying to take out of the vote?
Um, no, because it's state law, you don't have to vote on it, so it doesn't need an ordinance or resolution, but I did want to make mention of it in the notes, so that that would be reported.
The last thing I have, and I got, I got this today, the farmer's market folks have gotten the insurance, I'm gonna let Terry look at that after the meeting, to make sure everything's in order. If the insurance is in order and everything, are y'all good with letting them come one day a month, or up there and do the farmer's market, they've got a long list of things they're gonna do here, again, I was gonna let Terry look at it, make sure he's comfortable with it. If Terry's comfortable with it, are y'all comfortable letting him come back and set up at the Tanner Building?
As long as they, as long as they're insured.
Yeah, well, they brought me the stuff, but I'm gonna let Terry look at it. Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, James and Tina. Item 6, council needs to reappoint Glenn Moore Smith back to the beer board, I assume, Glenn Moore, you want back on. Okay. So what's your pleasure, council?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. A report from Tanner Preservation Alliance?
We don't really have a formal report, we've not heard back from the CDC yet with any progress on their visit, unless the city has, no. We're gonna find, we're gonna call up tomorrow and find out where that stands, but with summer vacations, it's probably tied up in paperwork or something. But we do have a draft newsletter I'd like to hand everyone, we're gonna start a capital fundraising campaign, and mail these out, we have a Facebook page, we have an email address, we don't have a website. We have a side of a PayPal account, we feel that there's possibly people out there that are passionate about the Tanner Building as we are, and just want to flood us with money.
Thank you. Okay, there's no old business under new business, item A is consideration of ordinance 2014-05 banners and signs across streets and alleys.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance and the register, it's ordinance number 2014-05, an ordinance in the city of Newport, Tennessee, banners and signs across streets and alleys restricted.
Grabbing a motion to approve on the first reading.
I'll make the motion. You know, I, I'd like to have all the shift away, part of that license authorized by the city council, that's finally, no hazard will be created by such banner or sign. If we're gonna do away with them, why we gonna come, have them come back to us to vote on them again?
We want, we both want it.
Yeah, right there, so, so you better want, if they want to hang it, we say it's good, and they can hang it.
Yeah, it'll be up to us.
I mean, I thought we discussed that we weren't gonna hang anymore, period.
Period, yeah. Just to strike that off, would that be all right?
If, if, I'll second Johnny's, if they strike that, the last part of that sentence off.
Okay, what, okay, show me which that.
It says...
16-1.
16-104. Read that paragraph out there.
It shall be unlawful for any person to place or have placed any banner or sign across any state highway, public street, or alley, except when expressly authorized by the city council, erase that out, that there should be gone, with, except, without, when expressly authorized. Yes, we'll just take that out. I'll make that motion if you take that out.
And I'll second your defense with that being done.
Yeah, I did pay attention to that, thank you, Terry.
So Mayor, just to be on the clear, section 16-104 shall say, "It shall be unlawful for any person to place or have placed any banner or sign across any state highway, comma, public street, comma, or alley, period."
Okay, now we got a motion, a second, with that struck out. Correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of resolution 2014-08, TML Risk Management Pool Safety Grant.
Uh, Mayor, that's, of course, we do that every year, that's a matching grant from TML, safety grant, you spend $4,000, which we spend a lot more than that every year, on safety equipment, and they reimburse you up to $2,000, once you hit $4,000, and that's, that's something y'all got to vote on, that you support the safety program and the applying for this grant.
Make a motion?
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item C, discussing, discussion of city administration.
Well, Mayor, Alderman Morgan asked if that be put on the agenda, and he is not here, so. here, so...
Wow. So we don't know what it's about?
Well, he had said, what he, what he had said was that he wanted to look at changing the charter, the part of the charter that states that the city administrator must within 90 days of taking the position, move into the city limits and then change, either striking that out or changing it to Cock County and taking out the city of Newport.
But this is something that has to be approved, has to be approved by us now, but has to go to the state before they approve till January.
And then come back and be approved again.
By then, we'll probably have a new council.
Those three descending four get it back.
Yeah, but that's, he, he had that put on there.
I think that that would be a waste of time. November's around the corner.
Yeah.
They can strike it down, whoever thinks it.
Well, since Kenny put it on there, shouldn't he be here to explain more about it or... What's your pleasure?
I think he should be here to explain it. He put it on the agenda.
Okay, just, y'all want to just move it to the next council meeting?
The least year or, or, you know, it just has to be done by the first year and the new council?
Yeah, we don't, there's nothing we can do to the first year.
There's nothing we can do to the first, to the agenda.
We've got plenty of time, right?
Put it on there.
We don't have to see it until January.
Exactly, it's...
Just put it on the...
Well, it has to be to the, the legislature has to act on it after we vote to change the charter. So if they don't, they don't meet till January 1st.
But it can be voted on at any time.
It can be voted on any time.
Yeah. Okay, y'all, let's just put that on August agenda. Item D, consideration of approval of TDaw Highway Maintenance Contract?
That's the standard contract. We've been doing for 20 years with them. It's where they reimburse us. It's about $53,000 roughly for work that we do along the state highways.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Worth more than 53,000.
We do more than that, but that's all we can get back.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Got one item under consent agenda, roadblock for the junior ROTC, October 11th, 2014. What's your pleasure?
Well, I mean, yeah.
We got a motion, who's second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Hear none. Item 10, consideration of bids for tax anticipation note.
I think we all know what this is. Tina, what's your preference there? Did you look at the numbers?
Well, looking at this, it'd be Newport Federal.
Because I'll make the motion and take, we'll go with Newport Federal.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Comments from citizens? Yes.
My two eloquent speakers, Robert Brennan and Mike Profit, was unable to be here tonight. But I did want to ask you, this will be my last time that I ask, that the mayors, board of mayor and aldermen, make a motion to reinstate Glenn Ray to general manager of Newport Utilities.
Again, there are two of us that are long on there and two of us can't do it.
Well, I'd just like to have everybody on record on where they're at. First, you've got two here and got four, five people here, four people.
I think me and Kathy pretty well let everybody know where we stood.
I'll make the motion, put it back on the board. That's fine, ma'am.
I would appreciate that.
We can't do that. If we suspend the rule, add it to the menu, I mean, add it to the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Then mayor, I'd like for you to ask, add it to the August agenda. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I'm not one of Roger's eloquent speakers. I've been out of touch here for the last six months or so and I wanted to find out where we stood on this thing. But I would like to say just a word or two, if you might. My name is Tom Moody. Grew up here in Newport, raised on Fifth Street, Newport Grammar, Cock County High School. Service pastor of West End Baptist Church, but that's got nothing to do with it. I'm just here as a citizen because I, I just wanted to make my opinion known about this. I've served on various boards within the city and the county. Very briefly on the rescue squad, foster care review board. In Morgan County, I was a parliamentarian through the county, zoning commission, election commission, machine tech, parliamentarian with Southern Baptist Convention, and I served on a major board down there in which we had to terminate the manager for just cause. The cause was listed in the motion and at that point, when we made the motion to do it, then when the lawsuit started, we were told, you can't say anything else. We had a gag order from then on. And I understand that. That's a legal thing. I understand the gag order. I understand that. I worked at Newport Utilities Board, NUB. I don't know when it was changed to NU, but I worked in this building. The room you call your conference room was my office in the engineering department. I worked there for five years and resigned to go to Bible school. Every truck that we had was called a city truck. They were all red. Matter of fact, Jim Franks got me in a world of hurt one time when we was a scam artist going around town and he was saying that he was from the Newport Utilities, but he was driving a white pickup truck. So Jim put it in the paper that all trucks, the city trucks, are red. Only thing is, I drove a white station wagon and almost got whooped up in Cosby up yonder because of that. But the point is, they were city trucks. The water company's trucks were blue, power company trucks were red, mine was a white station wagon. My check was signed by the city manager, the city alderman, Bill Whitson, and the chairman of the utilities board, Everett McNabb. I went to several meetings for Jim Franks when he couldn't go. I represented him and I learned that there are two kinds of power systems or utilities. One is called a municipality, which is what we are, were, and the other is called a cooperative, which is owned by the stock, the ratepayers. We were a municipality. By definition, it is owned by the city. It is called Newport Utilities. I was friends in the chopper group, which is the other managers and engineers. I knew, I knew them all, I met them all, even delivered papers to them as far as their engineering was concerned. If, in fact, Newport Utilities was and is a municipality or a municipally-owned power system, water system, sewage system and so forth, does that not mean by definition that the official board, which is this board right here, owns it? Does that not mean by definition? Now, I'm going to ask an open-ended question and Terry, you've learned to never ask a question you don't have the answer to in law, but I am going to ask a question about this and I, I want to, I'm interested, I just want to know. I have watched you all appoint members to the utility board. I have watched you all relieve members from that board. Some didn't want to go. Some went out kicking and screaming, friends of mine, but you relieved them and others were put in their place. At least one works for the city under you. Now, I kind of believe in the smell test, just to be honest with you. I just wonder about this. I just wonder if that's one of those things that needs to be looked at. And then you continue to say, we can't do anything. Connie, I've talked to you, you're my, all of you are my friends. I've talked to you. You can't do anything. We can't, we don't have any authority. Okay, here's my open-ended question. When did you all lose authority over a city-owned, municipally-named Newport utility? When did you lose that authority? Did you give it away?
I can tell you that. I can answer that.
Fine.
We gave it away when we put three aldermen on that board out there.
Okay, well, then let's, okay, okay, that's fine. But is there anything legal? Does this board not own, do you all not, by definition, own the Newport Utilities Board? How can you say, we can't do anything? Now, you all didn't vote on this thing to fire Mr. Ray. You all, you all, you all didn't do that. And so you've got nothing in this fight except the fact that you all, by definition, own the Newport Utilities. And I think it's, the smell test would indicate that you can do something. And I've got a real question for you. To whom then are they accountable? To whom, to whom are, is the power board, the utilities board accountable if it is not to you all? And so if you can't do anything, then you've got a board out there that is not accountable to anybody and even the president is accountable to somebody. I don't know whom, but he's accountable to somebody. So when the lawsuit starts, as it probably will, then you got a gag order and you can't say anything about that then. But I, if you've got a leg to stand on, and Terry, you know more about this than I do, if you've got a leg to stand on it, my plea is to stand on it. Good grief, quit. This thing can be stopped right now. This thing could be stopped right now. If you've got a leg to stand on and tell the power board, this is we on you, so this is it, stand on it. Take the, take the step, take the stand and do something about this and stop this and let's get this thing settled. That is my opinion and I appreciate your time.
Any other comments from citizens? Yes?
I'm just curious, was the new ordinance on fireworks in place this Fourth of July and did you all get anything back? Any comment from the venue?
I didn't get any. Mark, they paid their fees?
They paid their fees and they got their business licenses. And they weren't screaming much that they increased fees.
Much.
Much.
Would they be allowed to come back next year?
By the ordinance that was passed, yes.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make my motion.
Do we have a second? Anybody opposed?